Regular meeting of the City Council, of the City of Cottonwood to session here. And it's June 4th, 2019, 6:00 PM. If we could please have the clerk take the roll.
Councilmember Alt House?
Here.
Councilmember Holtz?
Here.
Councilmember Howdigie?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Narin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Here.
Mayor Olinsky?
Here, thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Do any councilmembers have anything to report?
I have a couple items. On May 25th, Saturday, Councilmember Matthews, Councilmember Holtz, and Vice Mayor Henry and I all attended the Verde Valley Military Service Park Flag Raising or Changing Ceremony. Vice Mayor did a wonderful job speaking on behalf of Cottonwood, so we thank you for stepping up and doing that last minute and representing, representing the city of Cottonwood. Beautiful ceremony, they'll do it again on Veterans Day weekend. If you haven't seen it, it's just, it's a good ceremony. And every time you go to the Military Service Park, they are unveiling, you know, something new that they've, they've added. And so there were two new items this week that we were able to see. And I think Veterans Day, they're gonna, they'll have Rosie ready. I think that's the plan. And then on Saturday, the first, the day it finally decided to be hot here in Cottonwood, Vice Mayor Henry and myself attended the Old Town Association Cornhole Tournament. We did not throw the bags, but next year, we are going to be a team. And so we challenged the rest of you to team up. And we're, we're gonna be a team and we're gonna be out there. So wonderful, wonderful event. I was shocked when I got there, how many people were there and just, I was shocked. I really was. I didn't expect it to be as big. Supervisor Garrison told me that the person doing it said it was the biggest first event that he's ever seen. So great job to the Old Town.
Yep, great. Any other councilmembers have anything?
I have a couple of items, and I agree. I thought Parks and Rec, the Old Town Association, and the Chamber did a very nice job Saturday. It was a lot of fun, and yes, I haven't started practicing yet, but I will. Councilmember Alt House. Briefly, I attended the Airport Commission meeting earlier to discuss some community comments, mostly pro-airport. We did hear some, some good concerns, and I thought that the airport commissioners were very receptive, and I anticipate that they'll be coming up with some solution strategies, thoughts for council to consider at a later meeting. I thought it was a productive meeting. Also attended the Verde Valley Regional Economic Organization Long-Term Strategic Planning Committee meeting. Couple of highlights, there were a lot. There's usually a lot of good substance at that meeting. But one was discussing broadband in the Verde Valley and what some initiatives and efforts and maybe funding sources might be available to local communities. Also, really interesting discussion about aligning our workforce training and development with the industry needs, identifying what those needs are. It just won't stop. I keep backing away to try to make the echoing stop. I apologize.
Maybe that microphone.
Can you push, no, that won't help.
I don't know what it is, but I do apologize. But it was a good meeting. And then just an announcement of a free legal clinic, Cottonwood. The Legal Association is hosting the Cottonwood Law Day. This is a free legal clinic on June 20th at the Cottonwood Public Library. I believe it's from 10 to 3:00. But if anybody has any questions or would like additional information, you can just shoot me an email and I'd be happy to send over the flyer for Law Day for anybody with some legal questions or concerns. Thank you.
Great. Any others? No? Did you want to speak on the Yavapai College?
I can follow up after you.
No, you go ahead and, and speak on that.
So, the mayor and I went over and met with Yavapai College this afternoon, or this, for lunch. The Dr. Ryan was there, the president of Yavapai College, plus several of the, or vice-presidents or whatever their titles were. They are committed to workforce development, they are committed to the trades. So apparently several members of the community spoke at their last meeting and they were heard. And they made a commitment to develop a program, build a building, and work with our business owners to create a program that meets their needs, so much so that they expect to have a program running by the fall of '21. So within two years, they'll build a building, build a program, and have their first set of students. So in a couple weeks, Cottonwood will host a managers' meeting to talk about who should represent the community. But we're looking for business owners that have workforce needs, they're committed to the trades. They talked about their CTE program over on the other side of the mountain, it'll look something like that. But they don't want to assume it'll be the same, they really want to listen to our needs over here and develop a program, develop, build a building on their property, their campus on this side and, and move forward. It was refreshing and, you know, put your money where your mouth is, and I really appreciate Dr. Ryan and her commitment.
I agree. She, there was the board meeting that was held on this side of the mountain where almost every, every community mayor from the Verde Valley showed up to speak about the needs that, for career tech, so they did definitely hear us. And Ron Corbin and I would like to take a tour of the CTE facility over on the Prescott side. So if there's any other councilmember that would like, maybe we can coordinate that with, with Ron and Sandra to make sure we can all take a field trip over and check out what they have over there, so. Okay, anything else?
I do actually have a couple other things tonight if I could. I did want to follow up on the Airport Commission. So the plan is the commission will be meeting in their regular session later this month, and then they will ratify a list of actions that they plan to take, some they're already implementing, that we will then bring to council to review and present, I'm guessing in the last meeting in July. But that's the hope, to come back to council. And then the big part though is the master plan study, which will happen, and we'll bring that back in January. But in the next five to six months, there will be half a dozen opportunities for citizens to participate in different aspects of the commission, airport planning, the master plan, so there'll be lots more opportunity. I will give kudos to the commission, they listened, they were respectful, and, not that I counted anything, but I, it was about 80 in favor of the airport and economic development of the airport versus about 20% that were not in favor of the airport. So, and those are people who lived in the communities affected by the, the noise of the airport. So it was a eye-opening, and I really appreciate the chair entertaining, everybody had their opportunity to speak.
Very good.
Couple things going on, if you've noticed, and there were questions before the council meeting, we have, we've replaced the mayor's pictures, which will be posted across the hall in City Hall, as soon as we finish the spruce-up we're doing over there, we'll put the mayor's pictures back up over there. But we've replaced it with a rotating artist. And so Mary Ann, thank you for leading this project and taking charge. And our first artist is "Clouds in Motion" by Carol Carbine, and it'll run through July 3rd. We are gonna have a reception for Friday, June 14th, from 5:30 to 7:30 here in council chambers. Again, Mary Ann has coordinated this. If there's any other artists out there that would like to have their work on display for a month here at City Hall, give Mary Ann a call at 340-2727. Wanted to let the council and community know that NACOG Summer Youth Program intern Jason King did start over at the Cottonwood Police Department. He's working with the detectives on some cases, and of course, he followed up that internship with Cottonwood PD. Will be returning to Emory Riddle, Aeronautical University College of Security Intelligence as a senior this coming fall. So excited to have the intern working with our police department. The Cottonwood Fire and Medical Department is offering vacation fire schools to boys and girls ages nine to 12. The fire school will take place on the 13th to 14th of June from 8:00 to 12:00. So students who participate will participate in a wide variety of fire and life safety skills that include CPR, fire safety, physical fitness, obstacle courses, water safety. Hopefully, there's no pool, is there a pool, or are they gonna do some swimming, I'm hoping?
They usually go over to the recreation side.
Very nice. And instruction in leadership and team building. Students will be provided with a t-shirt, goodie bag, lunch prepared by the firefighters. Cottonwood Fire Department, in conjunction with other fire departments in the area and agencies, are extending the burn season due to a wetter-than-usual weather we've been experiencing up until June 1st, apparently. The permitted burning will be allowed through June 16th unless suspended sooner due to changes in the weather. The Old Town Music and Market will continue through, each Thursday through June and then return in September. It begins at 5:00 and ends at dark. Again, come by to shop. I did have the chance to go out this last weekend, it was some great music, it was nice seeing the, the families out there on the grass and, and enjoying our wonderful community. The Rec Center is hosting a daddy-daughter date night, will be Friday, June 14th from 6:00 to 8:30 at the Rec Center Banquet Hall. Check out our website for details. The Rec Center is also hosting a basketball camp, June 10th through the 14th at the Rec Center for kids first through eighth grade. Camp will go from 8:00 to 10:30. Registration ends this week on the 7th, it's $35. Again, see our website for more details. And finally, Saturday night, June 8th, the Cottonwood Aquatic Center Outdoor Pool will be hosting a dive-in movie and showing of Christopher Robin. That's Winnie the Pooh, right? Yeah. I have grandkids, not kids, so that's nice. Movie is absolutely free to attend, gates will open at 7:45 and movie begins at dark. The Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission will be selling snacks and drinks at a fundraiser. And I really think they've left out some things. Our Parks and Rec Department is hosting a whole lot of stuff, whole lot of camps, a lot going on at our, with, for our youth this summer. So if you don't know what to do, look up, look up our department on the website, and there's lots of activities.
Great. Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll move on then to call to the public. So this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that's not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any folks here tonight that would like to address the council? See a sea of city staff. For the most part. Okay, so we'll move on then to approval of the minutes of the work session of May 14, 2019, and a regular meeting of May 21, 2019.
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Alt House made the motion, Councilmember Narin seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved, and move on to the consent agenda. There's just one item tonight on the consent agenda. Following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. Special event liquor license application submitted by Thomas Schumacher, applicant for the Verde Valley Wine Consortium for an event scheduled for July 4, 2019 at the Cottonwood Kids Park located at 321 South 12th Street. Is there anybody in the public that would like this item pulled? Any councilmember? Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Alt House seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda is approved. New Business, Item 1, Resolutions Number 3005 and 3006, Appointing Members to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Step down.
Evening, Ms. Wilber.
Good evening. As you are aware, last week, we interviewed, when I say we, I mean council. Council interviewed three applicants for the two Historic Preservation Commission openings available. So those applicants went through the blind review process, through the interview process, and we're now recommending that we appoint both Randy Stephens and Debbie Garrison as they were both, they were the top two scoring applicants for those positions. So staff recommends that you move forward appointing both of those applicants at this time.
Very good. The reason Councilmember Matthews stepped down, just for the public's benefit, is that he represents council on the, the appoint, what do you call it?
The blind review process, or the applicant review committee.
Applicant Review Committee, thank you.
Sorry.
Should have an acronym, right? Okay. Any discussion from council?
I'll do it. I move to approve Resolution Number 3005, appointing Randy Stephens, a member of the city's Historic Preservation Commission with a term expiring June 4th, 2022. And I move to approve Resolution Number 3006, appointing Debbie Garrison, a member of the city's Historic Preservation Commission for a partial term expiring March 22nd, 2020.
Second. Okay. Councilmember Alt House made the motion, Councilmember Howdigie seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Holtz?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdigie?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, resolutions are approved, thank you. And congratulations to our new, two new members. Okay, next then is interview of applicants for the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Good evening again, or still. We have one actual seat expiring July 19th, 2020, available for the Parks and Recreation Commission due to a resignation of one of the current commissioners. So this position was advertised, we received three applications. One of the applicants did not live within the city limits, so he did not qualify. The other two applicants were Amber Bong and John Kubrak. Both of those applicants went through the blind review process already and are available tonight to be interviewed by council.
Great. So just to let the two applicants know, there's the Blind Review Committee and then the Council Interview. And so what we do is we, we tally the results from both interviews, and staff then makes a recommendation on who should be appointed to serve on the, on the commission. So there won't be any decision made tonight on this. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, very good. Okay, so in order that we're, we've received them here, I'd like to call up Amber Bong. Evening, how are you?
Good evening, good, how are you?
Very good, thanks for being here.
You bet.
So we have three simple questions for you.
Okay.
All right. First question is, please tell us why you wish to serve on the Parks and Rec Commission.
Well, I, my day job, I'm a nurse practitioner, so I talk about wellness and health and being active all the time, all day, every day. And I think Cottonwood is an awesome community, and there's lots of opportunities for patients to like engage in things with the Parks and Recreation. And I think like my perspective, like working with people in like a healthcare capacity gives me a different perspective about what we need from Parks and Rec. And so I want to be a part of what's going on and all the new changes and all the awesome things that are happening in Cottonwood.
Okay, great. Can you tell us what your specific qualifications are for the Parks and Recreation Commission?
Yeah, so I think like on a, on a professional level, so I'm a doctorally-prepared nurse practitioner, and so I've had lots of education about activity and being healthy and being active, right? In addition to that, like as part of my education, I had like some dispute resolution training. So I think I have a good professional background that makes me qualified. And like professionally, I'm someone that really likes to, or personally, I'm a person that really likes to enjoy all of the things that Cottonwood has to offer as far as Parks and Rec. And so I think for a variety of reasons, from different perspectives, like I'm well-qualified.
And last question is, what do you hope to accomplish during your appointment?
I think to bring value and a, and a different perspective. So I'm not originally from Cottonwood, I moved here about a year ago, and so I've had an opportunity to live lots of different places and see how a lot of different communities handle Parks and Rec and the different types of things that are available and the different types of ways that things are approached and the outreach that's done. And so I think ideally, I would like to be able to utilize all of that different experience, knowledge, education to make a positive difference in the, what's going on with Parks and Rec and the changes that are being made in Cottonwood.
Great. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, appreciate it. Mr. Kubrak? Evening, how are you?
Good evening, how are you?
Very well, thank you. Same three questions. First is, please tell us why you wish to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Um, I saw the opening newspaper, and I've got a long history in Cottonwood, I've been here for over 40 years. Retired from the police department in 98 and lived here ever since, have several, I have six kids, three of them still reside here. One's on the fire department, one has a business here in town, so we're connected pretty well to Cottonwood, I think I have a good feel for the town. And I just want to serve, it's just kind of my civic duty, I felt. It seemed like it might be a good fit, short period of, short term, so I could see if it was a good fit for me and for the city.
Right, great. And what are your specific qualifications for serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission?
I'm not sure anything super-specific. I've got a long history of serving as a volunteer in different things. I was on the Public Safety Retirement Board when I was with the police department. I've, I was an Arizona Hunter Safety Instructor, youth crisis hotline, I answered calls, calls from troubled youth that came in from all over the country. I currently serve as the Safety and Security Director for my church. Used to be on the church board. And I like, I like serving, I like making, you know, doing the best I can to help my community and organizations I'm involved with.
And what do you hope to accomplish during your appointment?
Just make the Parks and Rec the best it can be, provide the best service to the citizens of Cottonwood. And I don't know a whole lot about the, the needs of the Parks and Rec Department, I've been talking to some of the employees and some citizens, and I think I'm getting a better feel for that. I think they're doing a good job, but I'm pretty sure that like everybody, they've got budget concerns, and I'd like to see if I can help them with any, anything like that. I'm a pretty good brainstormer, coming up with new ideas and just helping in any way I can.
Great. And do you have any questions for us?
I do, I do not.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, well, thanks to you both for being in this evening, we appreciate it. Thank you. All right, that settles that.
Just to remind the council to give me the scoring sheets so we can...
Right, just if we could make sure that you're done. Okay, it's the moment we've all been waiting for. Item 3 under New Business is public hearing regarding the city's fiscal year 2019-2020 tentative budget.
And this is the time that's open to the public to talk about budget?
Okay.
They choose.
I don't believe we have any public left, but in case someone is watching on TV and wants to rush down here, within the next five seconds. All right, so let's go ahead and close the floor then.
Gabble in, gabble out.
Okay. And move on to the meat of the issue here, which is Item 4, Adoption of the City's Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Tentative Budget and Establishing an Expenditure Limitation.
Good evening, I'm Kirsten Lennon, the Financial Services Director for the City of Cottonwood. And tonight, we're going to hopefully adopt the tentative budget for fiscal year 2020 with an expenditure limitation of $76,000, $16,900. Little background, we did have a proposed budget that we brought to you and had some work sessions on in May, and this budget is slightly higher from that budget due to a few changes that were done since then. The changes are listed in the council packet, some of which include body worn cameras for the police department for $42,000, $15,000 added for contractual services to hopefully have a local agency help clean, keep the streets clean down in Old Town. There's also some funds that were moved, capital money that was moved in the fire department budget for an EKG that was decided that they could wait and do a bigger bolt purchase of three later down the road, and they would like to instead have their paramedic pay increased by 25 cents an hour, which to be competitive with the surrounding agencies, we needed to increase that by that 25 cents, so that will take it to $1.50?
Sorry, I'm the, the paramedic, we're at $1.50, we're going to $2.
Going to $2.
And that's still less than every other agency in the valley's pay.
And then adding an acting, acting engineer pay, which is a stipend, a per-hour stipend. And that, both of those items won't start until January 1st. Then we also increased the transit department's budget, their expenses and their revenues, by $227,000. Sedona has requested additional services for their program, LINKS program, and they are willing to fund whatever the cost is of increasing those services, either if the grant doesn't cover it, which we've applied to ADOT to try to get that increased funding, but even if we don't get that increased funding, they are going to cover all the cost of that, increasing that program. We also added an additional $150,000 into the HERF fund due to the budget that just got passed by the state where they've allocated more money for street maintenance. And we added 150, but the last I heard, it was up to 197 that we were gonna get. It's just currently budgeted in at 150. And then we also changed the money that was budgeted for the pension reserves to put in towards pension liability, we did a transfer out to HERF to do the sidewalks that were approved on March 21st. There's some other information in the packet about what the budget entails. A few of those items are two full-time employees, starting at a half a year, marketing graphics design person, and an accounting specialist. Some, a 2% COLA for all employees except for contract employees. And as you know, we said before that the health insurance premiums increased by 6%, that's part of the budget. There's some capital in the amount of equipment, in the amount of $561,565. And there's quite a few capital projects, which include streets, airport plan, and water and wastewater projects. And that's really all I have for you, unless you have questions.
Two questions. Council, do we have any questions? Yes?
Two. So the, two new employees, and I get the account specialist, I know you need, you need another one in there, but the marketing and graphics design, will that be paid out of the bed tax monies that we get?
Yes, yes, the bed tax monies will be covering that. And it was also, we're eliminating a part-time position at the Rec Center that was being, doing marketing and graphic design. doing marketing and graphic design and hiring the full-time at January.
Okay, so the other one was the 200-some dollars going to the transit is going to be completely reimbursed by Sedona?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Mayor, if I can, I just want to be clear, because the, the position will report to economic development, the marketing position, but they will be doing significant work for Parks and Recreation. I just, it's not a full-time economic position right now because a significant amount of the funds are coming out of the Parks and Rec budget to pay for that position. So, they'll no longer have that money available to hire a part-time marketing person. So, I just want to be clear, it's going to be a dual-split job.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions from council? Done a good job anticipating all of our concerns and incorporating that into the budget, so.
That was a great process.
Yeah.
Yeah, true.
Very good.
All right, let's, I move to adopt the city's proposed fiscal year 2020 tentative budget as presented and to establish the city's fiscal year 2020 tentative expenditure limitation at $76,016,900.
Second.
Okay, we had Councilmember Alt House make the motion, and Councilmember Holt seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alt House? Yes. Councilmember Halls?
Yes.
Councilmember Haudig?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Sorry. Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Good work.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Next, and last on the regular agenda here, is designating Kirsten L. Lennon as the city's Chief Fiscal Officer for fiscal years 2019 and 2020 for the purpose of submitting the city's annual expenditure limitation reports as required by Arizona-advised statutes.
So, in the past, we've always just signed the document and sent it in and named the officer, and they have requested that we start having it be part of the council meeting and have approved minutes. So, we will be back every year to have you name the chief fiscal officer to be able to sign the annual expenditure limitation report.
So, would you guys like spin a bottle in the office to figure out who's going to be the one?
No. That's me.
And just to be clear, the statute doesn't require you to appoint Kirsten?
No. Some, yeah. So, it could be...
I asked that you appoint her, though. Made that assumption.
You want somebody else to sign it, you know?
All right. Ready for a motion?
Yep, please.
I move to designate Kirsten L. Lennon as the city's Chief Fiscal Officer for the purpose of submitting the city's annual expenditure limitation reports for fiscal years 2019 and 2020.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Matthews made the motion. Vice Mayor seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Halls?
Yes.
Councilmember Haudig?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes. Motion passes. Very good. Congratulations. Okay, I move to pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. And Item 10 is Review of the City Attorney's Contract. Executive session pursuant to Arizona-advised statutes, council may convene in executive session to review the employment of the city attorney, subject to the city attorney's right to compel. The council will discuss this matter in open meeting. The council may also receive legal advice from outside council and give outside council and/or staff direction pertaining to the negotiation of a new contract with the city attorney. So, I would, motion that we move into executive session?
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Holt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so then, we're going to go back into the back room, I believe.